Okay, we're ready to go. Keep everybody... Hello, people. Sorry, we've gotta get going. Um, is this on?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Babe? Hi, everyone. Thanks for sticking around for the Heber City Council Forum. We are going to take a minute thirty seconds for each response. And we're gonna start first with Yvonne Barney. Nick Lopez is next to her. Morgan Murdock and Cory Noiz are our four candidates tonight. So, Yvonne, introduce yourself and explain to everyone why you're running, please.
Okay. Hi, my name's Yvonne Barney. I am...I guess I need to eat this. I apologize. Is that better? Okay. I'll say that again. My name's Yvonne Barney. I am actually running for reelection for Heber City Council. I have been on the Heber City Council for the last forty years. Prior to that, I have been a resident of Heber City for forty years. I'm a longtime resident here. My husband and I moved into the valley when there was literally 5,000 people in the whole valley. So, we have obviously seen a lot of growth, a lot of changes in Heber Valley. The reason I'm running is for my family, for your family. I prefer to be a voice for the people. I come in with no agenda. I come in with no connections to any outside groups. I'm neither for or against development. I'm for proper development. I am for development that sustains us as a community, that supports our community needs and wants, and doesn't increase or create more issues for our valley, i.e. traffic, crime, whatever the situation might be. So, those are some of the reasons. Also, I truly believe that you can have your cake and your...
Cheer.
So, is that all I get?
Yes.
Okay. I'm done. And we'll discuss more later. Here we go.
Good evening. I'm Nick Lopez. I am an eleven-year resident of Heber City. I am a retired Marine and currently still working for Salt Lake City Fire Department as a professional firefighter. I drive a fire truck. I'm married, have three adult children. They're out of the house and on their own. And I'm running for Heber City Council because I've spent so much time in service. Forty-two years in service. I'm a combat veteran. I bring to the table vast experiences in leadership. And I'd like to continue that in service here. I've served in the firehouse. I've served in combat. And I am here to serve the citizens and residents of Heber City. I believe they are the number-one asset. What's absolutely important is the citizens. I have no conflict of interest. I have no connection to developers or real estate or anything like that. So, I believe I come to the table with vast amounts of experience in leadership. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Morgan Murdock, and I too am running for city council. My wife Heather and I have lived here for seventeen years, and we love Heber City. We've raised seven children here. Five of them have graduated from Wasatch High School. We've had wonderful experience here in this community and in the school district. I've taught and been a school administrator for twenty-four years. And fourteen of those years were here in Wasatch County. And I had a wonderful experience teaching hundreds of students, working with many families. I've had opportunities to volunteer with youth groups and Boy Scout groups. And a nonprofit that teaches at-risk youth to ski and snowboard. A lot of great opportunities. And I want to give back to this community. I feel like I have a lot to offer. As an educator, I feel that I have really developed some communication and collaboration skills. And that's one of the biggest reasons I'm running. As I attend the meetings, as I read and research and talk to people, there is a need to improve communication and collaboration between the city council and the mayor and the county council and the Wasatch County Housing Authority and other entities. I want to build bridges and bring people together. Thank you.
My name's Cory Noiz. Most of you probably don't know me, at least until very recently. My wife and I moved here nine years ago. We lived in Utah before that, and we were, believe this or not, looking for somewhere affordable to live. And nine years ago, that was possible here. We moved here and we fell in love. And all of you understand why. It's not hard. Heber is a special, special place, and that's why I want to run for city council. I've lived in places in the past that fought too hard with each other, that made mistakes, that lost the magic of what made them special places. And we still have that here. My fear and the reason I'm running is that if we focus too hard on keeping Heber the same or just arguing amongst ourselves, we won't actually get anything done and we'll miss out on keeping Heber great. See, I'm not about keeping Heber the same. It's not gonna happen. If we wanted to, I would love to. I think we'd all like to bottle it up as it is right now. But that's just not possible. So, we have a very unique opportunity to work together to keep this place the special, wonderful place that it is that drew us all here. The reason that me and my wife chose this place. We weren't born here. We don't have family here. We have no roots here at all. We chose this place because it's special, and I want to do everything I can to keep it that way.
Great. Thank you. Hand the mic to Nick, please. We're gonna start with Nick on this one. Please tell us what your three biggest priorities are if you are elected on the city council.
If I'm elected to city council, my top three priorities will be residents first, absolutely first. In all my decisions and everything I will vote for on the city council, their voice will be heard. Number two would be probably public safety, including traffic safety. And public safety is important to me. I've spent thirty-two years with the Salt Lake City Fire Department. I know in-depth what we require, what a fire service requires. I had the fortunate experience of going on a ride-along with one of the battalion chiefs here in the county, got to see what they face. First time's up in some of the developments, some of the gated communities with him. Our wildland interfaces is an actual disaster. The fire service is doing everything they can, but we are in a time without getting more fire apparatus, more firefighters, more police officers on the street. We're pushing those gentlemen and those ladies to the limits. And their safety is a concern of mine utmost. And the citizens' safety is right up there as well. But we need to be doing more there. Finally, my third thing would be infrastructure. And that includes finding traffic solutions. And that's my number thirty.
Great. Thank you. Morgan, please.
So, my three priorities. First would be communication and collaboration, as I mentioned. And that's working together, the city council and the mayor, listening to the residents' concerns, working closely with the county, with UDOT. I speak Spanish, and I've used that throughout my career. And I think the city can do more to reach out to our Latino community and translate more communications. I think the school district is a great example of that in translating things into Spanish. Another high priority is traffic. I think I would agree congestion is a huge issue. To get traffic addressed, it's on Main Street and Forty. We need a bypass. We needed it many years ago. And so, I think collaborating with the county and with UDOT and making it happen as soon as possible, finding the best solution for traffic. And not just the bypass, because that will take years. And so, addressing traffic needs locally right now, exploring roundabouts and lights and one-way streets and different solutions. And lastly, I would also say safety is a big priority for me. I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Sever and tour this beautiful facility and talk about public safety. And then I went on a ride-along with one of patrol sergeants. We need to keep our community safe, and that would include pedestrian pathways and crosswalks. Thank you.
If it were purely what I wanted, my three priorities would be free ice cream at Dairy King, proof of residency to go to Deer Creek Reservoir, and the airport would be hot air balloons only. What I want doesn't matter, and that's probably a good thing. What I want for all of us that live in Heber is things that matter for all of us that live in Heber. And I'm not gonna be the only one that's gonna say it, because I think we have no shot here, so we don't say it. We have to fix traffic. We need to continue to be aggressive with UDOT to force the conversation to get the bypass built. But I also agree with Mayor Franco that if we really wanted that to happen, and we do, it's still not gonna happen next week, next year, next two years, next three years. We need to do what we can do now as well to make that happen. My second priority would be to work on affordable housing. I have young kids. They're not looking at buying houses yet. But I've lived in an area, I grew up in an area where I knew when I was in middle school that I wasn't gonna be able to stay there because it was too expensive. And that's a hard reality to have to face when you're thirteen. We need to fix that and do what we can. And my final priority is getting ahead of the ball rather than being behind the ball like government so often is with the ski resort that is coming down the hill at us. Deer Valley is here. It's going to get bigger. It's going to draw people. And we need to do what we can to protect ourselves as a town and not become purely a resort destination. So, this is somewhere we like to live and not just somewhere other people like to visit.
Great. Thank you. Let...hand it to Morgan.
Yvonne?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me on it. Then, here we go. Sorry.
So, my top three. First of all, let me say I think it's really difficult to put our community into a threesome. We have issues. I mean, we have problems. We have things that keep coming at us. We're growing. And I'm...sorry. Can you hear me better now? We're growing, and so I think that we can go back and keep talking and hashing over certain things. So, when we talk about affordable housing, for me, it's attainable housing. I think that is a priority. There are things that we need to do in order to reach those goals, but we have to be realistic. I think part of that is not thinking that high density is the only answer. I think there's other ways to provide that attainable housing. And I don't mean like four units at a time. I think that our...anyone who wants to come into our community should be providing those things for us as well. If you want to be here, then play with us the right way. So, that's the other answer. The other top priority for me would be infrastructure as always. You know, our roads, bypass. Oh, goodness. How long have we been talking about that? A lot of years since I've been in the valley. So, obviously, we need other solutions to go along with the discussion with the bypass. And so, going forward, that's something else. Collaboration. If we're gonna talk collaboration, let's talk to our other entities. I think Wasatch County is definitely...we need to have a better understanding and a better respect for one another. And I think that as I've been on the council, I've been able to do that. I have a good collaboration and good communication with members of Wasatch County. I'm wanting to keep that going. And in that discussion, preserving our old town, our history, our heritage is so important. That goes hand-in-hand with Wasatch County, looking at you, Kendall. Anyways, I think that all of that can be done and achieved if we're careful. And one of those is by using the CRA. I know that it's not popular, but if we are careful and we do it the right way, then I think that it is definitely a tool in our box that could be possibly used going in form of it. But we have to do it the right way. That's it.
Great. Yes, Morgan, next. Thank you. So, we all brought up affordable housing. I've looked at all of your websites. Everybody brings it up. What I would like to know is there are some tools in our toolbox that we've been using for a while, that some of you have brought up on your website. These are things that we're already trying to do. So, my question is, what new ideas are you bringing to the table with affordable housing? Thank you.
Thank you. New ideas for successful affordable housing? Well, I think one of the biggest ones is real collaboration and communication that works and that brings results. I mean, sitting down and talking with members of the county council, members of the Wasatch County Housing Authority, and discussing and collaborating before decisions are made and before public meetings so that we can be on the same team. I really think the city and county can work together to solve this solution in as creative ways. We've seen examples in Park City and elsewhere. I think public-private partnerships is definitely something to explore. Deed restrictions is not new, but I think it needs to be emphasized. I think we can use this tool to do more, to create more affordable housing. Infill is something that the council is discussing and working on, but I think there's still much more work that can be done on that. Infill in the old part of town where there are lots and there's space, and there are ...there's lots of opportunity and potential to address affordable housing needs. Fee and lieu is a big topic and a controversial topic. It hasn't been fleshed out, I don't think, and really discussed with the county. And I think more discussion could take place on that to make it an effective tool. Those are just a few things that came to mind.
Great. Thank you.
This might be a shock. I'm not an expert on affordable housing. It's not what I do for a living. I don't think I could come up with any ideas that aren't already out there. You could Google this right now, and you can come up with a list of everything that's out there. The problem that we face all too often in Heber, in Utah as a country, is that we have the ideas, but we waste our time fighting over the ideas instead of just moving forward and getting something done. Every day, every week that we wait and that we argue, we lose more people. We have a police force that loses people because they can live cheaper in the valley and they get tired of commuting. We have those of us who know we're not gonna be able to afford to live here long-term, so we're already planning our exit. I'm not gonna offer you some magic solution that you haven't read about already, but what I can offer you is a voice and an opinion that's willing to compromise, admit when it's wrong, and get things done even if it's not my preferred way of doing it. Because all too often, doing something, even if it's not what you think is best, is way better than doing nothing.
Great. Thank you.
I think as far as new, we have on council had a lot of discussion. And I do believe that there are...oh, goodness me.
It makes such a big difference.
And I do believe...is that better?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I do believe that it's important that we continue with some of those discussions. Yes, we need to do infill within our community, within the downtown area. Maybe that's how we keep the downtown, old town, whatever you prefer to call it, alive. Does that mean increased density? No. I refuse to think that a high-rise stacked flat apartment is our only option. There are other options. We have had, in the council, several individuals who've come in and presented to us great ideas. One of those is the Lithgow family. They have gotten some great ideas on how we can do more of a town home. We can do tiny houses. All of those things are options. I think we need to look outside the box. I also think we need to realize that what the state is looking at is not always something that will fit in Heber Valley. So, we need to stand as a council and be willing to say, hey, listen, we get it. We need to have affordable housing. Don't like that word, attainable housing is the word I'm gonna continue to use. We need to have attainable housing. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that we do what fits in our community. And sometimes that is not always what you see down in Heber or down in Utah Valley. So, those are some of the thoughts.
Couple of things. Yvonne took one of my topics with these tiny houses. It works in many other places in the country, within the state, that people are trying to develop these little tiny, basically tiny homes in smaller lots. And the communities are really great. I've seen some really, really nice communities that look...just miniature houses that we have here in Heber. So, I would push that. I would also push allowing, you know, changing the code. Do what we have to do so people can get a second home on their lot if it fits. If it's a tiny home that fits on their lot, let's do that. Something that they can give and get a starter home out for somebody, whether it's their own family member or somebody in the community, and have that Fonzie apartment above the garage, have the tiny home in the backyard, just something that they can put into play. But we're gonna have to make sure the code meets that and the neighborhoods meet that.
Okay, thanks. We're gonna move on to the other big topic, which is traffic. Cory, why don't you start? And we're on you, right?
Yeah.
I'm starting to lose...it's late. Sorry. Good. Thanks, guys. So, let's talk about ideas about traffic. Let's talk bypass, though. Let's get specific because, you know, the EIS study may not be satisfying the purpose and scope of what was originally planned for UDOT to do this evaluation process, okay? I mean, the director of UDOT said in a meeting about a year ago that seventy-five percent of the traffic goes to Main Street, okay? It's not people driving through. It's people, locals, driving around Main Street. So, with that in mind, you know, the bypass is not gonna solve all our problems. So, what other ideas, and you can talk about the bypass as well, but what other ideas can we work on today? Thanks.
If you're not noticing a theme yet, I'm not an expert. My brother is. He's a traffic engineer. If you want a really interesting dinner conversation, I'll give you his phone number. Traffic is a tough one. I think the mayor has a lot of good ideas, improving our side streets so that we don't touch Main Street. I don't know about anybody else in this room. Most of the time I drive on Main Street, I don't want to. It's just the easiest way to get to where I'm going. It's not that I needed to be there or I was trying to be there. It's that it was in the way of where I needed to get. And if we provided other alternatives, we might do that. Aside from that, I ride a bike. That's what I do. It's not very fun in the winter, but it gets the job done. But we can continue to look for other alternatives. But again, it's working together to actually make it happen. Our council, our city government, has been dominated for years now by fighting, by controversy and by turmoil. And all that does is serve to prevent solutions from moving forward. I am a believer that almost any option we could put forward would likely help. Probably not what you think is perfect. Probably not what I think is perfect, but it's better than doing nothing at all. This is similar to what we were with housing. So much of this is about simply making things happen. And where that starts is being willing to be in a meeting and put your ego aside and say things like, I don't know. I was wrong. I changed my mind. That's a great point. We haven't heard a lot of that for a while in our city government. And we need more of that to make these things happen. The ideas are there. We're having great discussions. It's time to make it happen.
Great. Thanks, Yvonne. And you know, Cory, people are saying online, they can't see you when you walk out.
I'll walk that way now.
So, just stand up and be proud right behind the table. Yeah. Thank you.
You got it.
Stand up. Okay. Right. You want me to start? Ready? Okay. As far as traffic, I think definitely what the mayor said, we have to look outside of just the bypass. It has been such a long, drawn-out discussion. It has been something that has been very concerning. So, I think we need to get beyond that. Obviously, a lot of the discussion with the bypass is concerns, UDOT concerns, Wasatch County. So, this is something that has to be interlocal. It affects a lot of people. There's so many things that need to be ironed out. So, that's one thing. The other thing is, is definitely we need to look at our side roads. We need to recognize that we have the ability to move the traffic in our community if we look at it in a positive way. If we see things that, hey, why don't we widen a little bit? Or maybe let's make this into a two-lane with some side parallel parking. But we have to be careful in how we go about it. We always need to take into consideration that we are affecting our citizens. We're affecting how they move in and out of their homes, especially in Old Town. You have a lot of homes that only have the small little driveways, so they use the roads in order to park out there. So, these are things that we have to do. We have to include the community. We can't just make this a Heber City decision. It has to be a Heber City and citizens' decision. Yes, the experts do know what they're doing, but even sometimes, they can't always have the answers. So, that's what it needs to be.
Traffic. So, I did three ride-alongs. I did one with the Heber Police Department, one with Wasatch County Sheriff's Department, and one with the battalion chief of the fire department. And all three of these, one of the biggest things was traffic. One of the things we discussed on my trips was traffic. And as an emergency operator of a fire truck, I know what it is, how hard it is to get a fire apparatus, a safety vehicle, through on an emergency, through traffic. And I work downtown Salt Lake. We have a problem where those apparatus, those drivers trying to get to emergencies can't get there because the roads are not wide enough to get people safely to pull over off the road. Midway Lane's a good example. Some of the other side corridors are blocked with just how narrow they are. We also need to push UDOT. We, as a city council, we, as the citizens and residents of Heber City, need to stand firm on what we want UDOT to do. The bypass is down the road. Right now, I would like to see UDOT utilize the ground that they already have, widen Forty to six lanes. And this should start all the way from I-80, in my opinion, because we've got so much growth in Wasatch County. I think we can lengthen right-hand turn lanes. We can ensure that the left-hand turn arrows work and can get traffic through. And we can work on the bypass, specifically the Thirteen South bypass. That is unbelievably one of the worst ideas I've ever heard of. So...
I would agree with the others that we definitely need to focus on some local solutions. The bypass is down the road. And we hope it happens as soon as possible, but as the mayor said, five, seven, eight years, it's hard to say how long it may be. But the mayor has mentioned, and I know, I appreciate that she's taking a proactive approach, and the council is discussing ways to address this. And there's a lot of different creative solutions, but I think it's important to get resident feedback. Look at roundabouts. Look at possible one-way streets. Look at some more lights possibly. But 500 North, 600 South, 1200 South, there's some really busy streets that need to be looked at, that need to be addressed. Something else, just as Cory mentioned, encouraging some more pedestrian traffic. Bicycles, skateboards, walking. And we do need some more trails. We do need some more sidewalks. I know it's expensive. See, that's not cheap. We gotta keep pedestrian traffic safe, but let's encourage more of it downtown. And a lot of people, a lot of locals avoid Main Street, sometimes myself included. Sometimes I'll go around the block to a light so I don't have to make a left-hand turn because I've seen accidents and I know how dangerous it can be, or how long you might have to wait to make that turn.
We're done?
I assume that was my timer, so I'm done.
Okay.
We started Cory.
Okay. Okay. Yvonne? Again, I looked at your websites. I saw revitalizing Main Street as a big issue for a lot of you. But I'm gonna get pretty specific on these next few questions because it's nice to have vision and thoughts of what to do, but I think the taxpayers want to know how you stand on a few things, okay? So, revitalizing Main Street. We just witnessed the Heber City... We just witnessed the Heber City Council take $7 million of affordable housing money from a developer early so they could use it to buy a property on Main Street because it was needed, I guess, for the C Street or whatever plan the city is doing for downtown. Taxpayers have very, a lot of taxpayers have concerns about that. That you're moving affordable housing money into downtown reinvestment, which now the city council, the city owns that property on Main Street, okay? So you're using the affordable housing money to speculate in real estate, basically. I mean, that's the bottom line, okay? And so that's a concern to people. But also, other taxpayers who are talking about their taxes going up, you know, to use our taxes because if we're not paying for affordable, it's gotta come from somewhere. And it generally comes from the public. They're concerned that they are subsidizing business owners on Main Street to be more profitable. And I'm in the real estate business by trade. I've had people come to me and say, you know what? I would've bought on Main Street if I knew we were gonna get help. You know, people could've bought all along Main Street 10 years ago. So that's my question to you. When you talk about revitalizing Main Street, I wanna know if you're okay with moving the affordable housing money to purchasing property and to maybe the residential taxpayers are gonna have to subsidize that reinvestment? Thank you.
All right. So hopefully give us a little bit more time on this.
Okay.
Okay, please. As far as the discussion on what occurred when the council decided to allow a certain development to...
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry. I feel like a lot of... Is this better? I'm so sorry. I just don't wanna spit all over it because these guys don't like spit in front of them, so. As far as the discussion concerning the development and receiving kind of an exchange, if you will, which is what the Fee and Lou is, we did receive that $7 million. I approved it. The understanding for me was that we are approving this because we did need to purchase property. For me, that property was key in providing potential, possible, hopefully, putting in downtown housing. So, did that happen? I don't know. It remains to be seen. These are viable questions. Is that something that I will continue to do in the future? Absolutely not. Because we obviously stepped away from what the decision or what the thought was and what I was being told. And it was, obviously, we're using it for possibly other things. There's the problem. Anything that we do going downtown needs to be transparent. Not just with the community, obviously, that's the most important, but also with us as council. We need to know where that money is going. Do we want to revitalize? Do we wanna give money away to businesses? I don't think that's the point. I think the point is, is that how do we keep ourselves going as a community? We have a whole separate community brewing north of us. After the council approved, whether it was the previous councils or so forth, I mean, for the last eight years or so, there has been changes up there. I would just say I was an individual who pushed for a referendum to stop the NBOC from going in and because of that concern. The argument back in the day was, hey, if we put this NBOC up here, well, that way we can keep the downtown area viable. That hasn't happened. If anything, we are seeing that it's separating. So I'm just gonna say that in order for us to go forward, yes, there's gonna be some hard decisions. But I do believe that the only thing that we are going to do as far as revitalizing is making sure that we go outside of just taking money and then sitting on it and going, what are we gonna do with it now? Use it for what we say we can use it.
I absolutely, absolutely against moving that money. That would've given, I believe, somebody said something like 200 affordable housing. We just had the question about affordable housing. Moving that money was just wrong. We have, I have a great respect for other people's money. I don't like my own tax dollars going to wants, or wants rather than needs. I think as far as revitalization of Main Street, Main Street is important to this community. I don't like the idea of narrowing that and allowing more walkable space when that is the major artery that goes through this whole community, through this whole county. I think we can do things as a city to keep up that street. Nicer curbs and gutters, you know, more lighting, maintaining it, snow removal. But putting wants before needs is just irresponsible. So I wanted to say that the tax dollars are very important in how we spend them, how transparent we are, and how much we wanna spend on each thing. There's more to Heber City than the five blocks of Main Street that we wanna revitalize. That's all.
I know that in Vision 2050, there's a lot of great ideas. If you haven't read it, I encourage you to read it. It's only 100 pages. But it is a good framework. And I think there's a lot of great ideas in there. But also some, I think, that should be revisited and revised. But I think part of this whole redevelopment of the park and downtown, I think there's some definite benefits to that. I've spoken with city leadership, I've spoken with residents, trying to wrap my brain around it and understand these different aspects. And I realize part of it is to have these businesses succeed and bring more revenue, bring more residents and visitors downtown. Shopping, recreation, public parking, just making it more accessible, more desirable. And a part of the long-term plan is development and mixed use so that you've got some commercial that's bringing in, you've got some housing, mixed-use housing options that are bringing in some revenue. And so, talking to some of the council members, I realized there's some creative solutions in taking this $7 million of Fee and Lou and using it in this creative way with the end result of helping with affordable housing and other things. I think it's important to be very intentional, be very calculated. I've been researching about the Community Reinvestment Agency. And the CRA could be a very viable tool. It's used in hundreds of communities around the nation. And I think that's something to look at. But it's important to have a game plan, to be accountable to the public when making these big decisions. It's a lot of money. And I think it's important to get feedback from residents and really, really discuss it before these decisions are made.
All right, people of Facebook, I'll stay put for you. I have a financial planner and a tax preparer. So if you're ready for this one, when it comes to this, I am a little bit of an expert. My wife told me to get direct tonight, so I'm not gonna beat around the bush on this one. I think that reallocating the $7 million has the potential to be a very good move for our city. And there's a lot to pan out, and there's a lot to play out. But I look long-term in what I do for a living. And we can collect Fee and Lou from developers, but someday we run out of land to develop. And what Fee and Lou comes then? See, I focus more on building income. It can continue to solve this problem. It's not going to go away. So if we can use that money to purchase assets that will continue to produce income that the city can use to solve a problem that's going to be here forever, I think that could be a wonderful move. If you get a screaming deal on a condo in Heber right now, might be $350,000. $7 million buys 20 units like that, not 200. 20 units does not solve our problem. Done and scratch it. But if we can invest that money in places that produce the income to continue to supply more affordable housing every year and then use some of that income to reinvest more and gain the power of compounding interest and compounding growth, we have a shot at actually beating this snowball that's already rolling down the hill called unaffordability. We have to catch up to that, and this is a great way to do it. And it has the potential to solve this problem, not just now, but long-term.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna ask one more question. So, audience, if you wanna come up here, I'm not gonna wait this time. We're over time, so please, you know, come on up here and get ready. Lastly, I think, who's next? Morgan or Nick? Okay. So a lot of you talk about open space. And I sit on the Wasatch County Open Space Board, so I understand open space. And I'm also a Heber City resident. And to me, I go, you know, where are we gonna get open space? There's not a lot of places in Heber City to really, you know, save some of those spaces except for development when you cluster and then there's open space requirements within the development. So in the Heber City general plan, the bypass was brought up. And that is the biggest concern, I think, of every voter in Heber City is, are you willing to allow that bypass to go through the best open space we've got in our valley? And so that's what I'm asking you, Nick, is, you know, what are your ideas for open space? But I do want you to answer where you think that bypass should go. Okay? Thanks.
I love the open space. Big supporter of preserve Midway, big supporter of Utah lands, open lands. And so I've been against the bypass from the beginning. I don't believe it's ever fit my vision of what this valley should remain. You can't replace it. God's not making any more land. And all we wanna do is keep putting roads on it. But there is two viable, or two options. Mine would be Option A, which is coming off 9th, 9th North and going around the town. I do not like where it's going around 13th South. I think that's wrong. But as far as the open space, I don't like that. It's encroaching on, you know, what's made this valley, what's made our heritage here so special. In Heber City proper, there's been, we've got a couple places that's open space. We have a few parks. We have this space out in front here that's just beautiful, the big, great, grand trees. We have the park across the street that's, although they've gotten some great improvements, I don't think it needs to be developed any more than it is. Everybody loves the lawn over there. Everybody loves the trees over there. They love to play with their kids over there. I don't think it needs to be have a commercial building on it that's used for anything. That's open space. The property that's gonna be vacated pretty soon next to the tabernacle or the city, I'll call it City Hall, that could be open space. That could be a seatable park with Wi-Fi or something where it's grassed. 50, 60, 100 years from now, people are gonna say, why didn't they save this open space? Why didn't they, wouldn't it be nice to have a place to have afternoon lunch in that nice, beautiful sunshine? And that's gonna be gone. This front piece right here, park, the place next to the tabernacle.
Great. Thank you. Morgan?
So I love Heber City. And part of what I love is the open space, the parks, the trails. I love recreation. I love being outdoors. And I know this is a sensitive topic. It's a controversial topic with the bypass. We all feel that we need this bypass. Most feel that we need the bypass to address the traffic concerns. And I've been researching for months. I've been talking to city leadership and residents. And it's tricky. This is a tough decision. There's a lot of pros and cons. One thing I have learned from the UDOT website is that the Potter Lane option would be $6.5 million cheaper. It would affect 10 properties instead of 20. It would affect one historical property instead of five. And the commute time would be about a minute faster. Now, these statistics could change as UDOT continues to do research. I also understand that Plan B, Smiths 900 North, could take out part of Smiths Gas Station, including Jersey Mike's and some of the retail, and could be disruptive to some of that development right there. But it's challenging because Potter Lane is 50 acres of the North Fields. And 900 North is 20 acres of the North Fields. And so there's a 30-acre difference there. And so understandably, that it's such a controversial topic. I believe that working together with UDOT, with the county, that we can find the best solution and getting lots of resident feedback, we can find the best solution for the bypass. I'm all for preserving open space as much as possible, but also doing it what's best for our city. I love Coyote Springs Park. I hear about Muirfield Park. I hear about Duke Property. There are some exciting things happening right now with our council and our mayor. And kudos to them for preserving some of these open spaces and parks. Thank you.
Well, it took two hours. And we're finally at the question you all actually showed up for, right? My wife told me to be direct. I support Option B. You can think of that what you will. We all have our own reasons. And I think at the end of the day, we all wanna do what we think is best for Heber. So I'll tell you why I support Option B. If we choose Option A, and we don't get to choose, but if it ends at Option A and it pops out by Smiths, my fear is that 20 years from now, we have two bypasses. We have one that comes out by Smiths. And then we also have one that ends at Potter Lane because the first one didn't get the job done. My fear is that if we choose Option A, we knock out twice as many homes from people who live here. And I would ask the council members who support Option A if they would be willing to give up their home for it because that's what they're asking twice as many people to do if they support that option. I love our open spaces as much as anybody. I use them daily. I run, I cycle, I mountain bike, I swim. I spend 30, 40, 50% of my life outside, no matter the weather. I wanna keep them here too. But I'm also a realist of what's happening in our valley. And I'm trying to make sure that we have somewhere great to live for the next 5, 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50 years. And sometimes that means making a tough choice now. I don't wanna see a bypass go through the North Fields. But I think more than I dislike that, I dislike what might happen if we don't see a bypass go through the North Fields and we still wanna live here in 20 and 30 years. That, to me, scares me a lot more than having a road go through it now.
You know, when I first moved into the valley, the discussion, like I said, has always been, you know, what about the bypass? If we would've done, could've, should've, you know, we can go back and try and figure out where we went wrong. The point is, is that here we are dealing with it now. You know, the point is, is that we have decided to grow instead of thinking about what that growth is going to do with this valley. If I were going to say I want Option A and, hey, let's not tear apart and let's go ahead and go through the North Fields, yeah, that sounds great, doesn't it? But to me, the North Fields has been the Central Park of Heber Valley. It has been the iconic view of our valley. And we can sit here and say, oh, that's the best way to go because it'll be faster. But you know what? The growth is coming, still is. It won't stop. Council members who have continued to annex and allowed annexations in high density has created the problem that we are now sitting in, including other density that was approved before that time. What will happen next? If we say we want to go down the North Fields, well, what's stopping current council members, future council members, from saying, well, you know what? That road right next to 40, why don't we start opening that up for more annexations and more growth? It's easy for us to say things now and say that we won't, but we probably will. That's just a fact. And then here we are back at the beginning. Whether you go down the front or whether you go down the back, we are always going to be dealing with the question, shouldn't we control the growth first? So if I had an option, well, no, I don't want it to go down the North Fields. If I had an option, well, no, I don't want anybody having their homes taken out. My daughter happens to be one of them. And no, that is not why I'm sitting on the city council because it has been said that the only reason I am sitting on the city council is because I'm trying to stop the UDOT from taking my family's house out. That is false. I'm sitting on the city council because I do believe that we need to voice our opinions to UDOT and we need to be firm. to UDOT, and we need to be firm on where we're going. What that decision is coming forward, that is really up to UDOT, but we can say a lot between now and then, and give suggestions, and that is our responsibility as council
Okay, great. Anybody, audience, any questions? Okay, as they're coming up, could you please go down the list and just say where your email, excuse me, website is, where people can learn more about you in 10 seconds?
Mine is yvonneforhebercitycouncil.com. And it's the number, sorry.
The number four.
My name's Nick, the number four, heber.com.
Y'all like that very much. First time in my life I've used one. I think I've got one. Hi, my name is Chemo, I've been slow to get up here because I'm in the county, not the city, and also I have issues. I go to, well, Zoom is a great thing, I don't know what it is about me, but I watch the county council meetings, I watch and go to the school board meetings, I've even been to a Heber Power meeting, and this year I started watching the city council meetings, because I think they're all connected, they all tie in together, and even though I don't have a vote, I think people in county have a say, because it affects us as well. Oh, first, Tracy, thanks for putting this on, and all the candidates, thank you for your time and effort, unless you've run for office and have been through it, people really don't understand the amount of effort and hard work that it is, so I really appreciate all you guys doing it. So, Kindle, I'm sorry, but the county meetings are C-span, I've actually fell asleep in county meetings. The school board, if you did a Grinch Worthy Dr. Phil, is kind of what it is. The city meetings, what do you think that is? This is Jerry Springer Show. And Cor, you have a very good point, a very, very good point, and Heidi, I'm glad you're here, and Scott, you're here, because this question is for everyone. Cor, you said that if all we do is argue, we're not getting anything done, and I think that's exactly the problem that I see as an outsider with the city council, is there is some really Jerry Springer moments, I was watching the meeting that was talked about earlier today, and I don't, I don't know how anything can get done when there's so much fighting and just vile comments. So my question to you is, what will you do about it? How will you address it? And Heidi, Scott, you can use your format, maybe answer the same questions, because if that, I think everyone has solid, good ideas, they may not, I may not agree with it, but I'm not an expert in everything, but if we can't get to a point where we're going to agree, Cor, you're exactly right, nothing will ever get done, and it'll just be bitterness in the valley, because I'm not the only one that, you know, recognizes that there's a problem in the city council when there's contention.
Okay, Yvonne, please, you start, and I'm gonna give you one minute to answer that, please.
Okay, what I have done already, when I first sat on the city council, let me tell you, I was completely taken back by the disrespect that was shown by certain council members from day one, on towards the leadership of the mayor's office. I think that's the first important thing, if you're going to work on the city council, you show respect to the mayor, whomever is sitting in that position. You may not like them, you may not agree with them, but that respect needs to be paramount, paramount, I think that's number one. Number two, I think it's important that the discussion collaboration, yes, I do collaborate with the city council members, I have collaborated with the mayor's office, I have collaborated with our attorneys, I've collaborated with the council members, and I think that is very important. You may not agree with each other, but you have to be willing to say, hey, I don't agree, and respect that. I have always been a no vote on many, many things, but I have also been a yes vote. I have worked with council members on certain boards, and I think that's important. So, yeah, it becomes a matter of respect first, foremost, respect each other, respect the position, respect one another's differences. If you don't do that, you can say you're doing it, but you need to show you're doing
Respect gets respect, and I believe that my experience as a sergeant major in the Marine Corps, with my right hand, or I'm being the right hand of the colonel, of the commanding officer of battalion, I may not agree with the commanding officers that come and go, I may have never have agreed with them, but I respected their position, I respected the man or the woman they are, and I listened to what they had to say, not because it was my orders, because as a sergeant major, I have just as much say as the commanding officer does. That's my job, and so to be able to listen to somebody's opinion, somebody's ideas, that's the start. Give them time to speak, you can rebuttal it, you can talk it out, you can find another way, you don't have to agree with everything to make things work. We're never, we're all different people. But we also need to give the respect from the city council position to the residents, and that's not always done. I will make sure that at least I give that respect. Thank you.
I have a lot of ideas, I wish I had more than a minute. Crucial conversations is a great training, I would recommend it for everyone, including city councils. I think when you're wrong, admit it quickly, when we make mistakes, admit it, it's hard, it's human nature, we're all stubborn at times, be quick to apologize, and I'll just take this opportunity, I'm sorry if I've offended anyone here in the last 17 years. Be ethical, be professional, be respectful, whether you sign the pledge or not, raise your arms to the square, take the oath, and let's go. Be open, transparent, and go to the source. If there's an issue, go to the source, ask the questions, apologize, ask forgiveness, and just work it out. So I just, I'm running because I really believe I can be a bridge builder, I can help with communication and collaboration, it would be an honor to work with Mayor Franco or council member Phillips, it'd be a pleasure to work with any of these three candidates, I think I could work with them effectively.
I don't think Morgan's offended anyone in his life. I have.
That's my wife.
Okay. I spent 20, 25 years of my life doing that, and I had someone point something out to me, see, I thought I was smart, I thought I was pretty great, and then someone pointed out, if I lived my life thinking I was the smartest person in the room, I was never gonna get any smarter, and life got a lot easier once I accepted I'm never the smartest person in the room, usually not even in the top 10. Got a lot easier when I started acting like it, too, and I think that's where it starts, we can talk about how we respect each other, we can talk about how we need to act better in these meetings, but where it begins is understanding that even when we disagree, and that's the whole point of having five of us on councils, that we're supposed to disagree, I need to accept that, probably, you probably already see it too, they're all smarter than me, and so if they think a certain way, I probably should figure out why they think that, because they might have something behind that, and if I'm willing to do that, I might change my mind, and I might decide something different, and we might come to a lot better decision than if I just stay stuck in my way.
Great. Last question.
Can you start this end?
Yes, sure, that's fine.
This is her, everybody, okay. So, speaking of getting residents involved, respecting residents' opinions, and trying to get their input, how do you feel right now that residents are involved in the decision-making process here in Heber? And do you think you have, do you think, you have plans or ideas on how to improve that as needed?
Well, this is a good one.
I try.
My website's already active, it's been active since the first day of my campaign, and if elected, that will be a public forum where I'll be available to discuss and talk about things. The reason it needs to be that way is I don't have any social media, so that also means, and this is a plug, if you have a problem with me, if you would like to gossip about me, if you want to call me names, generally bad mouth me, that's fine, do it on Facebook, I'm not gonna know about it. And I think that's where it starts. I think for too long, there's been a little bit of a problem of transparency in the city council, not because they want it to be, but I think sometimes it's a little hard to pull up meeting minutes, and know what's happening there. You gotta read 30 pages to figure out the one bit of information you were there for. Scott's done a great job with his newsletter, and I think we need more of that, and we need more of taking things into plain English, that's what I do for a living, is explain concepts that most people find mind-blowing, they boring, in a way that they might find engaging enough that they want to listen and actually learn something. That's my opinion, better transparency and options to actually understand the important
So I think there's a number of things we could do to improve communication and collaboration with our residents. Regular town hall meetings, this is awesome, this is great, and just informal meetings, of course, only two members of council could attend, but to just have informal discussions. Outreach to the Latino community, and more representation and involvement from our Latino community. Social media, email, newsletters, I think both mayor and council member Phillips have been an example of that, with reaching out through different forms to the residents to try to get feedback. The citizen request tracker I saw on the website, that's pretty cool, I bet a lot of people don't know about that feature, and I think just encouraging residents to come out and attend events. I was at the park celebrating the end of the sewer waterline project, and I was the only one there for quite a while, with BH and everyone else, and there was a lot of food. We gotta publicize, market, get the community out to these awesome events that take a lot of time and preparation.
Community council meetings, I believe that there should be some small, every community within the city is unique, and I believe that small community councils can meet, talk about their issues that they deal with every day in their neighborhoods, and bring that back to the council through their chair. That gives us a better, broader spectrum, gets their voice out, and they can get that done, and put it in some minutes himself that the council can look over. The other thing we need to do is when we do have a key thing going on, a key item that is of great importance to most of the community, or the community at large, is to take time and make some adjustments in the agenda, so that has adequate enough time that the community can speak in public. Lessening the amount of time that residents have ability to speak out in a community meetings is detrimental, it makes them feel like their, their voice is not being heard. If only three or four people can speak, because there are only 10 minutes, that's not good for citizens, and that's what's important to me.
I think probably the best way to do that is to speak out, you need to speak out, I'm gonna say that over and over again. As a community, as community members, we have a responsibility to tell us, speak out to us, send us emails. Also, the only other way that we are going to reach out to you is show you respect. If we're not transparent, you're not going to trust us, so we need to be transparent, we need to make sure that we're giving the information, sharing what it is, and being honest about it. You know, I'd like to say that there's the truth, there's false, there's fake, false, and then there's the gray, we sit in the gray quite a bit in Heber City, we need to stop sitting in the gray, we need to be honest about what we're saying and what we're thinking, so that's the other way. The other way as well is, I think we need to recognize that when citizens are upset, they have the right to speak on Facebook, no matter how frustrating that is for us as city council members. I've had people say things about me, I don't always like it, but I have to realize I am in the public eye, and while people may make mistakes, and they may have their judgments about me, I have to recognize that Facebook is exactly what it is, it's just a way for people to vent. Even though we say that's not the way it should be, it is going to be that way, and I'd like to respond at the final end on what we discussed earlier.
Sure.
I think it's important, earlier in the mayoral discussion, there was a discussion, and some citizen came up and asked Councilmember Phillips what, why he reacted the way he did, concerning a citizen and their son, and no names were used. I think it's important to recognize, and the reason why I say it's why we have to protect the First Amendment rights of our citizens, is for that reason. You need to understand that there was context involved in all of that. Yes, I did reach out to Councilmember Phillips, I was told that my son was wrong, I don't like bringing my family into these things, hence, that is why there was a private meeting. I didn't want to put Councilmember Phillips on the spot, I wanted to discuss it, I thought I was taking the precautionary measures, and talking about it with the mayor, the mayor did not put this together, I want that straight out, I'm the one who did it. I contacted mayor, I contacted our manager, I contacted our attorneys, our manager decided that we also needed to have Chief Severin there as well, because he had a different perspective. I presented several statements from other citizens, it wasn't just from Ms. Salisbury, it was from other individuals as well, who had shared with me their concerns and what they had witnessed, they didn't even know that my son had made any comments online, they didn't know who it was against, because when he approached the council, he did not use anyone's name, he did not say anything about anyone, he didn't call out any of the council members. In his comment that he made online, he mentioned that there were three council members, he didn't use their names, and he also said that it was sociopathic language, which, if anybody understands, gaslighting means sociopathic language, he just spelled it out that way. And before he even made a mention, there were several, several other comments in that thread that were very disparaging, very negative, very disrespectful, in my opinion, towards Councilmembers Phillips and towards other individuals, and I think county was part of the discussion, the council as a whole was part of the discussion, and some individuals made some very negative comments and used foul language. My son didn't either, it was very simple, basic, to the point, and there was no person's name. Unfortunately, he does work for it, I don't say unfortunately, he's appreciated working where he works. I feel at that time, what happened is feelings were hurt, and because those feelings were hurt, there was certain actions taken by Councilmember Phillips that I think were very negative. I would never, never go after any other council member's sons, or daughters, or family member's job, no matter whether or not they said something negative around me online, that's not my right. I protect, I believe in the First Amendment right, I believe that we have a right to say something, and as long as there's nothing threatening, then go at it, be bold. And so I needed to make sure that we took care of that, and that there was an understanding as to what the discussion was, I would have referred, that comment was not stated, and while I appreciate that citizen has the right to do that, I just wish it would have stayed out, because we have done a lot in our family to try and keep it under the radar, so as not to expose anyone, not to expose my family members or anyone on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and please check out Wasatch Taxpayers Association, join us, $10 per person per year. If you enjoyed this debate, we appreciate you all showing up, thank you.